Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Monday, May the 16th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And the invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Bobby Walker of Bobby Walker Ministries. Good evening. Pastor Bobby.
Let's pray. Holy Father, thank you tonight for this meeting. Thank you for the leadership of our council. Holy Father, may you bless them with wisdom and guidance as they lead us into an area where everyone alive will be made better. We thank you in advance, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bobby. And now if you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. And that takes us to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to the agenda a discussion to have the Planning Commission review and make recommendations on our current STR ordinance. Going back about four years ago, we talked about reviewing the STR. And so many residents in the last six months have voiced their concerns at our meetings about STR issue, and it's in our top 10 priorities for this year. I don't think we need to have a lengthy discussion on this tonight. We just need to recognize that citizens have concerns. We need tonight to demonstrate to the residents that the board is listening to them. So I would just like to have it added to the agenda and have a short discussion to send it to the Planning Commission.
Well, I have a primary motion. I have a...I don't have a second for either one, so.
I'll second that.
So we have an amendment. So let's just vote on the amended agenda first. So the amended agenda with the addition of a discussion of an item relative to sending the STR issue to the Planning Commission. Let's have a...
Are we going to discuss?
Yeah. Let's have a vote. Yeah, we can have a discussion, and then we'll roll call that one first. Discussion on the amended agenda.
So I'm not inclined to add this to the agenda. One, I think it's important for transparency purposes to have important topics on the agenda when the agenda gets noted so that people who are interested in this topic can attend and give us their input on it. And I believe part of our discussion on priorities was that we were going to do some further investigations before we send this to Planning Commission so that we don't just send it to Planning Commission. We give them some guidance on what direction we think they should go.
I agree. Anybody else?
My thoughts are to, with the way the motion is, to send it back to Planning Commission, we're not giving them any guidance. I believe we've got a survey ordered, and we're going to have another study done. So to me, a discussion prior to having all that knowledge and that information is just a discussion of one side versus the other. And I think we need that information to make educated and smart discussions regarding the effects of short-term rentals on the economy, home values, and everything else. I think we need that information before we can even really...before I can even discuss it, because I have my own opinions in certain ways on one way or the other of what I think, but I don't know until the survey's done. In this...the other survey that went out that I'm hearing about, I'm a registered voter. I didn't get a survey in the mail to return. So I don't know how many others didn't, but we've hired a company to do a survey, I believe, and then we've hired, or we're getting some more.
We're going to.
The Economics Impact Study or something like that, I believe. So until I have those...that information in front of me, I don't know what I'd talk about. Is it a zoning issue, or is it a rental company, or is it a short-term rental issue? To me, a lot of the things I see, it seems like more of a zoning issue than a short-term rental issue, and maybe an enforcement issue rather than not. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that have to come into this fold, and I hope that in the questionnaire, the survey that goes out, we ask what...is it a zoning issue, or is it a short-term rental issue? Do we not want the three-story houses anymore? Do we want just quaint two-story houses that only fill 25% of a lot, 30% of a lot? I don't know. But I'm hoping that stuff is on the survey so that we can find out, have information in front of us that we can discuss. Right now, to me, it seems like a lot of it's a zoning issue and an enforcement issue rather than a short-term rentals issue. That's my opinion. So I will not vote for the amended agenda until I have that information.
Can I ask a question? I believe this is for a moratorium, and I think...no? Are you saying no?
He was just...
He just wanted an agenda.
Send it to...he wanted to have a discussion about sending it to Planning.
I'm not asking for a moratorium. I'm simply asking for a discussion on the key issues surrounding short-term rentals that seem to get brought up over and over again by residents. And what I'd like to have is a short discussion on that. And then, after we have that, to send it to the Planning Commission, have them look at the issues. And the issues are pretty, I think, clear-cut. It's the number of short-term rentals in the town. It's the density in the town. It is the number of people living in a home, and it's the passing of a business license to another new owner when the house is sold. There are four big issues that need to be discussed. And I thought last time, when I tried to have a moratorium, to try to stop this, just so we could have all these discussions, that didn't seem to work. And then, maybe I misunderstood Kate, but I had a meeting with her, and she said, asked for it to be put on the agenda, and we could have a discussion and send it to Planning. And that's how I thought it was supposed to be done. Now, it sounds like we can't do that. The clock is ticking on this, and we keep losing homes that year-round residents can live in. And I just think we need to put a sense of urgency in this and send it to the Planning Commission and have them look at it, and then we can have the information sent back to us.
Well, I totally agree with what you're saying, Councilman Reiser. I'm just not...I guess I'm not real sure what we can do at this time. I'm totally with it. I'm in agreeance. I hope that we can discuss this. So, but at this...I just don't know what we can do. I didn't know if we...I was hoping that it would be something that maybe would put a halt like you had suggested the first time, but this doesn't sound like that. It just sounds like we just want to discuss it. So, I am in favor.
Anything else?
I think the questions right here show that we...it's not clear to me what we're discussing. So, like George and Steve said, I can't support this right now.
Yeah, I guess where I'm at is, we've heard the concerns. We've identified that as a priority for next fiscal year. We've identified several steps we're going to be taking, and we will take those steps. We're only hearing one side right now. Well, at these meetings, we're only tending to hear one side right now. I know we're getting emails and other, you know, so we're all getting feedback from a lot of different sides. So it's critically important to do this right, that we get all the information, that we get everybody in the same room, and we get through the process. We shouldn't skip steps. So I'm going to vote no on this particular issue. Not that I'm against the concept, because we've agreed to the concept a couple of different times. So I feel like, let's do what we agreed to. So why don't you roll call this?
Arnold.
No.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
No.
Sleeper.
No.
Wilkins.
Yes.
And Smith.
No. That takes us back to the original approval of the agenda, which you had made a motion.
I made it, yep.
Second.
Motion is I can to approve the agenda as written. All those mayors say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? We're approved. All right, next, we have a proclamation recognizing Resurrection Life Ministries. And I have George, who's going to go ahead and present it, and Pastor Joe is in the house. Come on up. You're going to come on up? I guess... Joe? This is for you. Come on up.
I was still bawling over the decision you guys just made.
Well, come on up and enjoy a proclamation.
All right. City of South Haven, Michigan, Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas on this Sunday, March 22nd, 2022, in honor of the Resurrection Life Ministries Church of God in Christ ribbon-cutting ceremony and church dedication service of their new edifice located at 322 Elkenberg Street, and whereas in July 2005, Resurrection Life Ministries was founded by Pastor Joe O. Wilkins, Sr., as a ministry where everybody is somebody, at which time the ministry was blessed to rent a building. In January 2006, the ministry was forced to relocate to the South Haven High School auditorium, where they continued to worship and praise God. In March 2006, Resurrection Life Ministries was able to purchase its own building located at 6057 Blue Star Memorial Highway. And whereas for the past 17 years, the mission of Resurrection Life Ministries has been to reach the lost and resurrect lives by empowering and equipping the people of God through the ministry of evangelism, preaching, and teaching of God's Word. And whereas our entire community has benefited from the leadership of Pastor Joe and Letitia Wilkins, we recognize the civic influence that this church has exerted through the years, and the many facets of its outreach and practical assistance to those in need, especially the recent COVID vaccination drive and annual Back to School Community Fund Day slash bookbag giveaway. And whereas it is my pleasure to issue this proclamation as an expression of our highest esteem and best wishes to the faithful and dedicated members of this congregation on this memorable occasion. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the City of South Haven wishes to recognize the Resurrection Life Ministries Church of God in Christ on their ribbon-cutting ceremony and church dedication service our best wishes on this day. And signed Mayor Scott Smith.
Come around, come around. Got it.
Come on down. Here he is. Megan, if you want to get some pictures for us. I'll go back there if you guys want to all gather behind him.
And that takes us to the consent agenda items A through F.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Question.
Yeah.
Regarding the street resurfacing bid from Compton.
Yes, sir.
Was that the only bid we received from that?
I believe...I think we had one other. I'll have to go in and look at my notes, but I believe that we had to set...these were pushed back from 2021, so we bundled them all together to get a better pricing.
You know, there's a lot of Shosha stuff in that same bid.
That's correct.
The way it looks in my packet, it looks like there was only one bid received, and I was just wondering if that is a fact or not.
Just let me know if you want to pull it.
I believe that is the only one we've received.
That's the way it read, and I was just curious. It's concerning moving forward to me, so. Other than that, I have no further questions.
All right, we've got a motion. We've got a second. This will be a roll call.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to new business. City Council will be asked to host a public hearing. Welcome public, for the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. So I know Michelle's here. Good evening, Michelle. Thank you for being here. And you're going to walk through the budget presentation. Is that the plan, Ms. Kate?
We can. I know that we've talked about our budgeting in our workshops. I do know that we have funds set aside for council priorities, and we've set those aside as part of the budget workshop. So how much would you like us to go into prior to the public hearing?
It's totally up to you guys. I just didn't know what you guys were going to present, so whatever you'd like.
Well, what we have is, for our city council priorities, we do have $15,000 set aside for our housing consultant. We've been using Ryan Kilpatrick with that. We have the upcoming housing workshop that we'll be using Ryan to come and talk with us about different options for our community, as well as potential growth in South Haven Charter Township. We do have the Citywide Impact Survey for short-term rentals. We've already been talking with the Western Michigan University's Kersher Center. We have that budgeted for $20,000. We do have $50,000 budgeted for sitting zoning...city zoning ordinance codification. As you know, that's been a priority for this council for the last two years. We have $40,000 set aside for a diversity, equity, inclusion assessment of the city operations. And then we do have a fair amount, I believe, $2.3 million set aside for general fund and street funds for street repairs. About a half a million dollars has already been approved in the consent agenda. Michelle, is there anything that you wanted to add? I know we did talk about taxable values at one of our budget workshops. Don't forget to turn on your microphone.
I can go over that if you would like me to.
You have to pull that closer, because they can't hear you.
Sorry. Okay. Okay, I'll go over the taxable values. We had an increase in taxable value from 2021 to 2022. In 2021, our ad valorem was $462,841,235. And for 2022 is $497,519,217. And then we also have our special acts, and that increased also from $5,145,264 to $5,403,927. And then our SCV also increased from 2021 to 2022. Our ad valorem role is $630 million in 2021, and it increased to $674 million in 2022. And our special acts also increased from $5 million approximately to $5.3 million from 2021 to 2022. We will be having, in the next meeting, the tax rates, which will show that we do have a headly rollback also on our millages this year because of the increasing.
We like rollbacks. That's good. Sorry. All right, very good. Call that good. So seek public input at this time?
Sure.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second, to open a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, it's open. If you'd like to discuss the budget, come on up. State your name and address. You'll have up to five minutes.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I basically have the same questions I had at the workshop, which never got answered. For the budget, I do not understand how the Marina Fund is in excellent condition to accomplish everything they want, when the city had to ask, I think, both the DDA and possibly also Parks Commission to cover costs that the budget couldn't cover this past year. And also, I do not...I would like to understand, is there going to be a millage decrease? I understand the template millage just has XXX. So we're all left in the dark as to what our millage increase or decrease might be. There appears to be a 70% increase, I believe, in SCV, so the income to the city should go up, and what is being done to control expenses and ensure our tax dollars are being wisely spent. With regard to expert consultancy fees, I again object to the $15,000 for one fiscal year for a housing consultant. We just spent probably more than that over a couple of years, so I do not understand why we need to spend that much in just one year. And with regard to the seminar that is this coming Thursday, it would be nice to have clarity as to exactly what that is, because chatter on Facebook from the township clerk indicated that the township asked to learn from what South Haven learned. And...but from the South Haven's presentation of the seminar, it's to host a public joint meeting, so there seems to be a disconnect as to what it is. So for all consultancy fees, the $15,000 for housing, the $20,000 for the STR, in light of all of the things that the city has had on its to-do list, what has been done? Where are we? And what do we need to get there? There's been a WE Upjohn Institute report that published in March this year. It appeared to have issued in December of 2020, but it's nowhere to be found. So I'd like to understand that...and that was $20,000. So we keep spending $20,000 here, $15,000 there, $40,000 there. It's not chump change. It adds up. And we have high taxes, and what are we getting for these taxes? Consultant reports that we ignore because it doesn't give you the answer you want. We want to know what are your intended outcomes? What do you expect to get from the reports that you are financing through our tax dollars at $20,000, $40,000? It's not transparent, and we need accountability. We've had some very bad things happen in the last few weeks with regard to snafus for zoning and things not being done. And now we're...I'm sure we're facing a lawsuit. And accountability for that. Should all these people be getting raises when there are issues and liability increases to the city? I just...I don't see accountability for all the money that's spent on experts, and I don't see how their results are being used. I see them filed away and ignored, and I don't see things happening. I feel like we're chasing our tails. It's time to stop. You know, housing and STRs are top priorities, but I don't see the ends justifying the means or the means justifying the ends, because there's not a clear goal. What is the goal? And how are you going to get there? And how are the consultants going to get you there? What are their tasks? And how are they going to do that? Because right now, all I see is money going out, seminars held, and not sufficient information in the public domain for us to truly appreciate where this city is taking us. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, I mean, I don't know what...it sounds like the one question was about millage and headly. You're going to bring that next week, it sounds like, so that'll be the...
That'll be the next meeting.
Okay, so that'll be the roll, kind of what the final amount is. Because with headly, so everyone understands the concept of headly, in the state of Michigan, the city's revenue can't increase higher than the rate of inflation. So if you have higher home sales, higher, you know, while it all elevates, we can't, you know, it's not like all that extra money is going into the city that rolls back your effective rate. That's the question. That's what's going to be presented next week. You know, regarding consultants, we set priorities this next year. We just talked about, I mean, I think you just ripped through, we have a DEI consultant. We're going to have those coming up. Yes, housing consultant, I think all of us have, you know, had the benefit of, you know, Ryan's work and whatnot. So I mean, I don't know if you want to comment on just, you know, the different consultants we use and how we...obviously, they're selected based on priorities that this council sets. That information is then used in decision-making.
That's correct. And we're not subject matter experts in some of these areas, so we look to those people who are. And we did first engage Ryan Kilpatrick after he was brought here by the Speaker Series talking about housing. It energized some of the community leaders and stakeholders around here, and we brought him in. And based on the conversations we had in 2018 and 2019, we started our Overton process. I know it looks frustrating to some folks because it moves so slowly, but it does work. But it is also, it's a level setting for some of these, to find out what the community wants and what we need to learn about the process. So that's why we look to these subject matter experts.
And then why don't you just count real quick, the housing meeting Thursday. I know we were going to discuss it later. Just want to just...
Yeah, it'll be a joint housing workshop, so it's just a workshop, and it will be with South Haven Charter Township and ourselves. Again, we are kind of hosting this, but it's with them additionally. And we're bringing Ryan Kilpatrick to come down and talk about housing. And what does this look like? What are the common terminology that's been accepted by the state of Michigan? What are the challenges faced by developers and people who want to find the housing that meets their income level? And what does it look like from a regional effort? Do we need to look beyond our borders, and how would that best fit our needs?
And we work very closely with the township on a variety of initiatives, whether that be police, water sewer. So this is a very logical step when you have a close working relationship with an adjoining township which has this neat thing called land, which we lack. So that's part of the point, is to start a way more regional discussion about housing, which this is good timing. So that's the purpose of that workshop, held in conjunction. There was a couple of them. I'll have to double back on the Marina one, so...okay. Why don't we...next person.
Nancy Nat, 125 Elkenberg. Not to beat a dead horse, but what is the workshop...how's this workshop going to be different than the workshop that was previously done before Overton?
We're not discussing that right now. We're talking about the budget.
That is the budget. It's $15,000 being spent again when it's already been spent, and we have the information to help the township to develop whatever property they may be looking at. I don't know what another workshop's going to add, or another $15,000 is going to add to that.
At this point in time, that workshop is scheduled to just have just that, a discussion. And this whole fee is not, I mean, I don't know if you want to break down.
It's not.
How early...I mean, that's not the whole fee, so.
The whole fee is not for the one workshop, so no. That's not. But he's done the work. He...I just don't know what more he's going to bring to the table that he hasn't already brought, that the council and staff already have the information for. I don't understand why we need to keep paying people to do the same work over and over again. Thank you.
Anybody else about the budget? All right. See you then. You want to close this?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go ahead and roll on. And next, City Council will be asked to consider approval of the following special event applications. Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate it. And I can just read these as a slate, and then we can, if there's any discussion on them as they go, because I know there's at least one person I'd like to present. So, special event 2022-11, Create and Connect Block Party, to be held on May the 20th and the 26th, from 2:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. at Elkenberg Park and Kids Corner. Special event 2022-12, Bobby Walker Basketball 2022, to be held August the 11th to the 14th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. at the South Haven High School in Elkenberg Park. Special event 2022-13, The Mitten Ice Cream Social, to be held at Riverfront Park on July the 30th, 2022, from 12:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. And then finally, special event 2022-14, Blueberry Festival 2022, to be held August the 11th to the 14th, 2022, at various locations throughout the city.
I'd make a motion to approve special events 2022-11, 2022-12, 2022-13, and 2022-14.
Second.
Motion and a second. So, I know we could just introduce him real quick. I know Bobby's here. I know Wendy wants to chat, so we can...
So we have a couple new events here. We have the Create and Connect Block Party, where you get to come to either the Elkenberg Park or Kids Corner, and they get to make little things out of these blocks, and that will be later assembled into art at one of the three locations, either South Haven Memorial Library, The Mittens Children's Museum, and South Haven Center for the Art. That's a very exciting event. We do have the Bobby Walker Basketball Tournament, which will be held. Usually, we do...he does five-on-five at Elkenberg Park, but this year, he'll be adding back in the three-on-three tournament. So that would be occurring on...at the South Haven High School. And then, don't forget, council members, he'll be doing the Community Excellence Awards that...
that Friday night. Mitten Ice Cream Social, again, a new event. This will be a fundraiser and kind of like meet and greet with the community with the Curious, Forever Curious Museum. And that will be held at Riverfront Park. There's some barricading that will be asked to be down there, but there are some restrooms right next door if your hands get all sticky from the ice cream. And then finally, the Blueberry Festival 2022 will be held at its usual time, the second weekend of August, throughout various locations in the city. And we hope to have a very fun event this year.
Sounds good. So, would you like to speak to yours?
Actually, one of our board members of here, Heidi Campbell.
Even better.
Do you need my name and address, too?
Oh, sure, that'd be great.
Heidi Campbell, 216 Erie. So this is a new event for a new venture here in town. I don't know that all of you have been to the museum yet, and if you haven't, I would certainly encourage you to do so. It is a remarkable work that Cindy and Joey have put together, or Wendy and Joey have put together. And I think for a town this size to have something of this nature is really quite a feat. This is not just for our visitors who come annually and throughout the year, but it's a great thing for our students and children who live here year-round. So it's a both-and, and that's a win. So the idea, obviously, is who doesn't like ice cream? We want to raise some awareness for this museum. We want to invite people to come and experience it for themselves and for their children and their grandchildren. The barricades are mostly because in addition to having ice cream, we are going to have yard games. Simple, fun. Cornhole and croquet and bocce and lawn bowling. So that's the idea behind it. We want to raise awareness, and it's the constant push-me-pull-you with a nonprofit organization. You want to raise funds so you can continue to offer the programs for the community. Are there any questions?
Sounds like fun.
Well, we're hoping it is, and we hope you all come.
Thanks, thanks for all the work. Appreciate it. All right, I know Bobby's here, I don't know, who else is?
Sarah's here.
Oh, come on. Come on up. Would you like, oh, there, she's got her blocks, I love it.
And I use this table to set some up. So we've worked from...
Can you use the microphone? Our friends at home can't hear you.
Sorry. So I've been doing block parties since, oh, maybe mid-April, and we've worked with pre-K right on up to senior citizens at the senior center. And we're looking for even more block parties to be held before June 15th, when our grant window closes. So if anyone is interested in holding a block party at your organization, I'd be happy to show up. And I bring blocks. This won't sound very good at home. So... So they're blocks like this. These were made in Hebron, Indiana. We found a company that actually makes them. She has custom-cut them, so we have just the sizes we need, the shapes we need. And I will leave a block with each one of you. I brought enough, if you'd like to work on one at home.
Let's go.
Okay, I'll do that. But let me assemble some that have been made very quickly. These came, sorry, these came from the library. We did an event this Saturday at the library. Get some very small idea of what it's going to look like to have 1,000 blocks put together. We have about 500 that are decorated, and we've got about 500 more to do. So one will be at the Mitten Museum, one will be at the library, and the other one, the largest one, will be upstairs at the Art Center. So I'll be busy that week before June 15th assembling these. This is what they'll look like. Just like when you were a kid.
Super cool.
They're assembled. And if you don't mind, I'll just pass one out to each of you.
Love it. That's great.
And you can use crayon, you can use colored pencils.
Thank you.
Permanent marker, you can use regular pencil.
Thank you.
I already did one. You did one, Wendy.
Thank you.
Just hear a little bit of yourself and some artwork.
I got a block.
And one of your sculptures.
I love it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for creating. That's fantastic. All right, I know Bobby's out there. Bobby, would you like to chat about your tournament?
Yes, so.
Mr. Bobby Walker.
First of all, I'd like to thank Kate Hosey and Kevin Schooli. This year, we're doing a 3-on-3 basketball tournament, which I didn't want to do, but I got, we probably got a thousand call in the last year. A lot of family don't have five kids to play ball, so they like to take vacation in South Haven, which I love, a beautiful city. So they want to make their vacation planned around, can they bring their kids from ages five to 14 to play 3-on-3 basketball in South Haven? And I said, yes, if you guys approve. So it should be lots of fun, a lot of excitement, and lots of things to do here in our great city during the Blueberry Festival. So thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you for doing it, as always. Remarkable person. So, Blueberry Festival, anybody here?
We have Kim.
Oh, Kim. Oh, Kim. You got lassoed back into that? How'd that happen?
I've been involved with Blueberry Fest since 2008. I can't get out.
Wow.
No, the festival is so important to this community because it benefits all of our different service organizations. Kiwanis, Rotary, We Care, AAUW, you name it, they're benefiting from this, and then that goes out, and it benefits the children of our community and so forth. So we're excited to be back. We are this close to being a full festival again. The one thing I would like to help, get your help in spreading the word, we want to put on a parade this year, but we do not have an organization to run it. So if we do not have a group that steps up by June 14th, we probably will not be having the Blueberry Festival Parade. So if anyone knows of anyone that wants to organize a parade, let me know.
Ooh, all right. Will do, thank you.
Did you say me?
All right. That's those. Any public questions or comments on any of those festivals that were just presented? I will just say that I am extremely thankful for the time, the passion, the energy, all these, these special events are a lot of work, as Kim will tell. I mean, it's all a lot of work. And here we have these wonderful people that have this passion and willing to, you know, paint blocks and put on basketball tournaments and like all this stuff, which is beneficial for our entire community. So just, you're wonderful people, I will just say that. And on that, I'll take a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, we got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I just, I wanted to abstain from this because...
That's right, from the one, she'll abstain from the 1-3. Okay, it passes, very good, thank you. All right. And next, City Council will be asked to set a public hearing to occur on June 6, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. to consider a commercial rehab abatement application regarding a proposed project at 764 Lagrange Street. And this is, again, just setting a public hearing.
I make a motion to set a public hearing to occur on June 6th at the next City Council meeting to consider a commercial rehab abatement application regarding a proposed project at 764 Lagrange Street.
Second. Motion, second. Griffin, you rushed up. Are you going to tell us about this, or just a quick?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, I rushed up because it's another exciting project I'm pleased to bring before you all. As many of you are aware, the city of South Haven enacted their second commercial rehab district late last year, so late in 2021. This district started at the end of the existing district and went south along the M140 corridor. The project that we have before you this evening is at 764 Lagrange. That's an older commercial building along that corridor, and Mr. Dan Jakeway is interested in rehabbing and reinvesting in that building and turning it into more functional and more modern office and warehouse space. I do believe Dan is here this evening, if there are any specific questions for him about the proposed project. Otherwise, procedurally, we are bringing this before you all this evening to see if you all would like to move forward. If you would, the request would be to schedule the public hearing. Included in the packet besides the abatement application is the draft resolution as well as a draft tax abatement agreement. This agreement is very similar to those we've brought before you all in similar situations, accompanying applications like this, and just provide various expectations and safeguards that protect the city and make sure that the proposed projects come to fruition. Or if they don't, there are options in place to make sure that taxes are captured as appropriate. Happy to do the best I can to answer any questions.
Good. Pretty straight ahead. Any questions? I mean, just setting the public hearing date, so I don't have any questions. Any public questions on setting a public hearing? None, all right. In that case, we have a motion and a second to set that public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Move forward. We'll see you in a week, a couple of weeks. And thanks for coming. Let's go next. Sorry, what's that? I'm hearing talking, sorry. Next, Council will be asked to take the following actions regarding the Harbor Club Condominium Plan Unit Development. So first, we're going to introduce an amendment to the Harbor Club PUD. Let me do that. Let's do that first.
Make a motion to introduce an amendment to the Harbor Club Condominium PUD.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Who's got this one?
We'll all get started, and I think Griffin will be jumping in here. Again, this is setting the motion, setting this for a public hearing. A Harbor Club Condominium PUD project has applied for a PUD amendment. Griffin can tell you more about what they're seeking.
Sure. As many of you are aware at this point, or familiar with the Harbor Club Condominium PUD, there's been a number of different amendments brought before you all over the past several years. This PUD was originally approved as a 210-unit condominium private marina project. Over the past few years, it's been amended. I think we're on the Sixth Amendment at this point. This evening, this is a relatively simple amendment, really just looking to eliminate a parking area designated for some townhomes and transition a few units from townhomes back to single-family homes. And there are maps in your packet that you can see showing what that transition is going to look like. There were some questions at the Planning Commission level about how this parking is going to be made up. The proposed townhomes include garage and parking space units, so my understanding is there's not actually any net loss in available parking for the development, as well as it's really just transitioning back to more of what the original development looked like post some amendments over time. But again, happy to do the best I can to answer any questions. The materials brought before the Planning Commission are included in your packet.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I noticed that as well. I said, hey, wait a minute, we're going back, which is okay, kind of back to what we agreed to, okay, which is good. Any questions in this group? Nothing. Public questions or comments on this one? All right. In that case, we've got a motion and a second to introduce the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, motion to set a public hearing on this topic to occur during the City Council's next meeting on June 6, 2022, at 7:00 p.m.
I make a motion to set the public hearing for our next meeting, June 6, 2022, at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Nothing new. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, it's set. Next, City Council will be asked to consider a motion to approve the proposed purchase and sale agreement with Berkshire Hathaway, included the attached lease for the former Michigan State Police Post on Lagrange Street and the surrounding property.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed purchase and sale agreement with Berkshire Hathaway, included the attached lease for the former Michigan State Police Post on Lagrange Street and the surrounding property.
Second. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Kate, are next buildings to get cleaned up along there?
That's correct. As you know, council, we had a notice in the newspaper inviting anyone to come and submit a proposal for this building, and then last November, this council agreed to direct staff to develop a purchase and sale agreement with Berkshire Hathaway. What we have come up with is a proposal for a purchase and sale agreement that substantially complies with a letter of intent and proposal that was submitted last year, the purchase price of $125,000, with a due diligence period of 180 days after the signing of the agreement, during which that time, there's also a lease included in here that will have Berkshire stay in the building but be paying a fee for some rent and covering all utilities. The due diligence period contemplates that they will be applying for commercial rehab abatement, similar to what we just set for a public hearing at 764 Lagrange. I'm happy to talk about any of the concerns you may have about the purchase agreement, and so is Attorney Kerseyal here.
Sounds good. Anybody have any questions about what we've got in front of us?
Kate, can you talk about the micro park?
And Nick, don't be shy to turn on your microphone there, but this was something that was presented in their proposals to take that side yard, it's a small triangular area, and kind of convert that into a small micro park for the benefit of the public. They would have some seating there and just have a little way to dress up that quarter. As we've talked about, maybe dressing up that quarter and improving it with our quarter improvements, as well as with the 425, that would add a little bit of green space on an otherwise very commercial area.
Right, I don't have much to add to that, other than to say that this agreement contemplates that they will be coming before the city seeking a commercial rehabilitation development, abatement and agreement. And that agreement, we would anticipate, would lay out more details of the specific rehabilitation projects, including some plans for that park, so the council would see those before the sale is complete.
My comment would just be, I'm encouraged by the slow improvement in that space received. Some movement along that corridor, which is encouraging, so. Any public questions or comments on this one? All right. Anybody else up here? See you now. All right, we have a motion, we have a second to approve the purchase and sale agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's approved. Next, if it would be okay with this group, I will read this group as a slate. City Council will be asked to consider a motion to appoint the following individuals to the respective boards and commissions with terms beginning June 1, 2022. Sue Frederick to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term. Maha Kardesh to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term. Ashley Demming to the Harbor Commission for a three-year term. Tim Rundick to the Harbor Commission for a three-year term. Liz Smith to the Library Board for a five-year term. Ida Slid to the Library Board for a five-year term. Andy Clavens to the Local Development Finance Authority for a four-year term. Grant Spencer to the Local Development Finance Authority for a four-year term. John Maline to the Parks Commission for a three-year term. Robert Sherman to the Parks Commission for a three-year term. Melinda Gruber to the Parks Commission for a three-year term. Amy Nichols to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. Tara Williams to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. Brian Sheehy to the South Haven Area Water and Sewer Authority for a four-year term. Don Bemis to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term. And then Brandy is sitting out there. How do I say your last name?
Cologne.
Cologne, thank you for not letting me injure that last name, to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term. And thanks for taking us up on that challenge. That's them.
I'll make a motion to approve as read by the mayor.
Second.
We got a motion, we got a second. Questions, comments? Some new names on there? A young lady on there?
Yeah.
So thanks to everybody for volunteering. A lot of good names on there, and I'm encouraged by everyone that was willing to volunteer, step up, so. And for those that didn't, keep on, we'll keep, things come and go, and just keep on keeping on. So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. They are approved. Thanks again. And next, City Council will be asked to receive an update from Police Chief Natalie Thompson. Good evening, chief. And thank you for being here.
Thank you. And before I give my update tonight, I just wanted to remind everybody that this week is National Peace Officers Memorial Week. So I'll just give a brief summary of what that is. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. So that started on May 15th, and it's, um, celebrated all this week, so. And, um, this past, um, week, um, at the regularly scheduled South Haven Township Board meeting on May 11th, Officer Chris Mersman and Officer Kevin Wildy were awarded life-saving ribbons for their efforts during an incident in South Haven Township that saved the life of an individual. And I can just read you, um, verbatim what the award read. On March 29th of 2022, at approximately 3:18 PM, Officer Chris Mersman and Officer Kevin Wildy responded to a medical assist of a 94-year-old male who was suffering a possible cardiac arrest. Upon the officer's arrival, they found the patient to have no pulse or respirations. Officer Wildy immediately began administering CPR, and after several cycles, Officer Mersman assisted by administering the AED that advised a shock was necessary. CPR was then resumed, and shortly thereafter, a pulse was detected. The patient was stabilized and transported to the hospital by shaves and survived. South Haven Area Emergency Services Director Brandon Hins commended the officers for their quick response and stated their actions proved fruitful in resuscitating the victim. Officer Mersman and Officer Wildy's life-saving efforts illustrate that every second counts when an individual is suffering a cardiac emergency. Next, I just wanted to provide some updates on some of the cases that our officers have been working on. Besides responding to the in-progress incidents and the proactive policing in the areas of traffic and community policing, many hours of our officers' time is spent on some of the more lengthy investigations that often span months. These cases often involve the execution of search warrants for information, evidence, lab referrals, and interviews, even after cases are presented to the prosecutor's office, after that time is spent preparing for court, ensuring evidence is in order, um, locating, making sure witnesses are available, et cetera. Uh, last December, we began investigating a case involving a caregiver stealing money from an elderly couple who were still living in their home. This caregiver had been hired by the family's children and unbeknownst to them for quite a length of time, had been stealing money, um, at least over $60,000 from what we were able to verify. Um, our department detective worked for over three months on this case. Uh, finally, in March, the Bembeere County Prosecutor's Office authorized a felony warrant for embezzlement between $50,000 to $100,000 on the suspect. Uh, the suspect is currently pending court proceedings and luckily will not be able to be a home health, home healthcare provider, um, in the future. Similarly, um, in January, uh, we began investigating a case involving another embezzlement, this time from a local business. Uh, the suspect was a trusted employee who had worked there for many years and had also been stealing for several years. Um, the business was able to provide valuable forensic accounting information, which helps us, as a smaller department, we don't have a forensic accounting officer, so whenever businesses can help, and that, that was really crucial in this, um, they provided, provided us that information, their record-keeping, um, and then along with a, a day-shift sergeant, um, he helped investigate this. We're able to determine, um, a loss of at least $94,000 had been stolen from this business. So again, in March, our prosecutor's office again authorized a felony warrant for embezzlement, um, for $50,000 to $100,000 on the suspect, so the suspect is also pending court proceedings. Um, in addition to these, we currently have three additional embezzlement cases, um, that we're investigating. Uh, one unfortunately involves another elderly individual, um, another involves a business that so far is at least $30,000, and then we have another from a business that is at least $10,000. So in addition to these property crime investigations, um, we are also currently investigating two, uh, criminal sexual conduct cases, and these are also, um, very involved, um, very time-consuming, and, uh, they, they take a lot of, a lot of our time. Uh, one involves a father and his stepdaughter, and the second involves a father with quite a lengthy criminal history and at least one of his biological daughters, and as, as of last week, um, we have discovered there's probably two or three more victims, so, um, that'll be a very big case for us. So the officers are working very diligently, but again, those take valuable time, and, um, so I just, I wanted to give some updates so that everyone knows that besides, you know, responding to calls for service or writing tickets, our officers do a great job, and they give these cases the, the quality time that they need. And again, we do only have one plainclothes detective, so we rely on our road officers and sergeants to assist in some of these larger investigations. There are a small sample of the, the larger cases that we investigate throughout the year on a monthly basis, including the busy summer months. And then finally, um, I have some, some fancy graphs that at the next, uh, city council meeting I speak, I'd like to get them up on the screen here for you, but, um, just to summarize so far, um, this year to date, um, our, our largest offense type of crimes that we handle right now are assaults and driving violations. Um, those are among our, our top two offenses that we investigate as far as, um, incidents overall. Person crimes, the number one, um, is assault, and then for property crimes, it is larceny. And as far as citations go, and this is from January 1st through May 12th, when I completed this update, um, we have issued 79 traffic tickets. We've issued 165 warnings. Um, we have written 128 parking citations, which, um, as of March 15th, we've got our beach parking enforcement working, so we will be taking over some of those duties. Um, we have written five golf cart tickets, and we have given 49 other warning citations, so we're gonna start keeping a running tally for citations, so I expect those to increase as, as we get into the summer months. And that is all I have so far. Are there any questions?
I'll just say, um, as always, grateful for what you and your officers do. I'm a firm believer in investing in training and equipment, and as was evidenced right there, there's a, you know, great example, so I think we sort of forget that in addition to just keeping us safe from bad guys, that they also save lives, do CPR, there's a lot that goes into a day in the life of a police officer, so I'm very grateful. So, anybody else? Questions, comments? That's it. Have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda, and if you'd like to bring up any issues or comments, come on, have up to five minutes to state your name and address.
Uh, John Laurstorf for $23 at Court. A lot of citizens that are here tonight were hoping that to begin the process of looking at the short-term rentals and zoning, that items could be referred to the Planning Commission so they can begin their study. Uh, you've been provided with over 500 responses from our voters here in South Haven about their concerns, and so as part of the process to begin, uh, identifying issues would be very helpful. I also have a question about the study that's being, uh, authorized. When is the study to begin, and when is the expected end of the study?
Do we have an official, uh, timeline yet?
Oh, sorry, was that, okay, um, we, we have the, um, the community survey that we've been working with, uh, WMU, so we should be bringing those, uh, survey questions to council in the next couple, upcoming weeks, and we have been looking for, um, qualified individuals to do the impact study because we, we know that council wants, uh, much detailed information, so we're still doing our outreach on that. I don't really have a timeframe.
So we don't have a timeframe yet on that?
No, but we're moving with expedited speed on that.
Well, again, we were hoping that the process could be begun because there's a lot of information out there about how people feel about, uh, the zoning and short-term rentals. We were hoping that would go forward.
Thank you. And I guess I'll just, I'll continue to reiterate that we want to have enough time to gather information and then kind of give them direction on what we're looking for, so. Anybody else?
Nancy Nat, 125 Elkenberg. Um, I've been in contact with the environmental managers at Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and in my recent communications, I'll just read two short ones. Mine to Daniel Lince, who was one of the environmental managers, I stated, "I was interested in an update regarding 229 Elkenberg, specifically in the application, if the application was received, and if so, how will the decision be communicated to the citizens of South Haven." His reply to me was, "Ms. Nat, there has been no change since I emailed you last. The MISTHA, MISTHA has not received an application for 229 Elkenberg. Best regards, Daniel Lince, Environmental Manager, Michigan Housing State Development Authority." So my question is, has the application from Habitat been submitted to MISTHA?
Uh, Habitat told us that they have submitted the application to MISTHA, but they have heard that their application was not successful this time around. Um, they have been working with a different consultant to, uh, see if they can pick up more points. That's what we have been, that's what we have been apprised of.
Okay. So I just wanted an update. Is there any way versus people having to come up and ask that we can get updates?
Yes.
How?
Well, we'll have to work on that. Um, we'll see what, what's the best way. We do have the Overton page, and we can put updates there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
With regard to updates, will we get any updates on what's being, oh, Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive, updates with regard to the building permit review and zoning review and what's being undertaken? I mean, I've looked at some information, and I see complete inconsistency. The only consistent thing is that it's inconsistent from one application to a next. So what is the status of that? Are citizens going to have an opportunity to comment on that, considering we're, we're the ones who bear the brunt of poorly reviewed plans? And we're the ones who have to pay higher taxes because of damages or whatever. So we have a vested interest in making sure that the building permit issue process is fully vetted and is consistent from one person to the next. As I've said before, it seems like residents have to jump through hoops, but developers, basically the city asks, "How high do you want us to jump?" There's a different standard, there appears to be a different standard, and in light of the events from this past few months, I think it would behoove the city to have, as I said before, a citizen committee, especially those who have shown an aptitude for reviewing the zoning ordinance and identifying errors on the staff's part. Also, uh, the other question's been answered with regard to the survey. I do express disappointment. STRs have been an issue, not just this year, but last year, and as it's been pointed out, correctly so, it's a zoning issue. So there's a lot of moving parts. I'm not sure the survey will help actually identify. I think getting this before this Planning Commission where people can review potential changes, make public comment, and have a fully transparent view, I think that would be the most expeditious, and it certainly would save us a lot of time and money for consultants to prepare reports that seem to, uh, not go anywhere. And with regard to STRs, yes, I think enforcement is a significant issue, and it's not clear how, how certain things can be enforced. First of all, it's not clear what the occupancy is, so in the city's assessor site, you can go on the building permit tab, and you can see a certificate's been issued, but you can see no details. You have no idea of what the occupancy limit is. You have no idea that they evaluated for parking. You, there are many unanswered questions, and it, it's very frustrating to have these in our residential areas and not know exactly what criteria have been applied, and it's definitely not clear where waivers have been requested and what information has been provided for those waivers, for occupancy waivers, um, because I, as, if you were not grandfathered in, you have a limit of 12, but I've noticed that there's several that were not grandfathered in and have an occupancy of 14 or 16, so they had to have requested a waiver, but there's no way to get that information. And in full transparency, especially with the issues that the citizens are bringing to the council, that should be provided. We should not have to request it. Let's all have the same information, let's all be on the same page, let's know how these are going to be enforced, and let's just make sure our neighborhoods are amenable for the children to play safely and cars are not blocking sidewalks. I brought that to your attention last year. I walked around Ward 1 with a friend, and it was not uncommon to see cars parked across the sidewalks. So you had to walk in the road on a Saturday morning, I don't know, like 10:00 AM, I mean, we met at the farmer's market, stopped by the garden. It's just, it's not the way we should live. I am a beneficiary of STRs. I don't think we're against STRs per se, as long as they are good in our neighborhood and everyone gets along and everything's reasonable. We need a reasonable solution to these problems, and I'm not sure the survey will do that, and thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, so there's, well, I'll just, two comments, there's a lot of work to be done on STRs, we'll get into that, and regarding the zoning review process, we'll make sure that that's, we kind of share what we've got, get some input on that, so I'm all for more input on that process to make sure it doesn't happen again. Anybody else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dana Hollinger, 1443 Clark Place. Can you guys hear me back there? Okay. So I do have a question, so this is a question, I'm asking for help here. A couple of times tonight, I heard about the study, and it seems like it's Western Michigan University?
No, there's a community survey that we're using Western Michigan Kersher Center.
So there's a survey?
And there's, the, then the council has also asked for an, an impact study.
An impact study.
It looks at the economy, um, and how the local economy will be impacted, as well as housing, other, they asked for the total impact on, um, how communities, how this community is impacted by short-term rentals.
Okay, so there's a study, or, I'm sorry, a survey and an impact study. It's two different groups of people doing those, or the same group of people do? I'm, I'm just, I'm really just asking.
Sure, uh, the Kersher Center only does surveying, so.
They do surveys.
There would be a second group, yeah.
And so is the plan, so, this is, this is like Byzantine to me, I don't know if this is Robert Truel's order or what, so it sounds like in order for us to be able to have a discussion about the help that people in the neighborhoods want, we have to go through some more surveys and impact studies?
The city hasn't done a survey since 2018.
And then will it, then does it go to the Planning Commission, or, or what, or, and is the Planning Commission, like, managing these studies with the people, or is it somebody else?
I guess I'll wait to see any of your comments, I don't want to take up your time.
Okay, yeah, but I, I'm asking, I'm asking as a question, so I'm not posing it as a criticism, but you can understand, I wouldn't be asking a question if I wasn't really curious how all this folds together and still creates an environment, a place where we can have this discussion as a community. If I didn't know better, I'd say it was a great way to slow-roll it, but I don't know better, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add one thing, Mr. Mayor. I agree, I'm confused too, and I'm sitting here on city council. I don't know how to get this thing discussed, and when the comment was made, there's two sides. That's the problem. There are not two sides to this. We are all on one side, we all want to live in this community and get along. Why do we have to say up here, whoever said it, there's two sides, we're only hearing from one side? No, there is one side, that is the residents who want to live there, live here and be happy. We don't have to divide this, one side versus another side. All we want to do is hear from the residents. When you have enough residents to say, "We have a concern," we have to be able to discuss this. I can't tell you how many city councils we talked about. I can't tell you how many city councils, we talked about the width of a driveway. I'll never forget it. One resident said he wanted a wider driveway. We must have talked about this four or five times on city council. We have an issue that there's hardly a person in this town doesn't have a comment about it, doesn't have a point of view, doesn't have an issue, and we can't even talk about it. I first tried a moratorium. Fair enough, you don't want to do it. Then I said, "Let's put on the agenda so we can have a discussion and send it to a planning commission, have a discussion." We can't do that. The gentleman says, "He doesn't understand." He's a smart man. John's a municipal lawyer. He doesn't understand. I'm sitting here, I don't understand. I am really frustrated because I don't know what the next steps are. All I know is every day that goes by, this is getting worse. And it's getting worse from residents who have been here their lifetime. They come to us. And I remember Brian DeSey, and I'm not trying to give a speech, but Brian DeSey always said, "Numbers count." And he said, "If you had five or six people come to city council and say they want a stop sign, the odds are they'll get a stop sign." We have 550 people that got that survey. Sorry, Steve, you didn't get it. Don't know why. But 80% came back saying they are not happy, however you want to put it, with short-term rentals. That seems like enough to move this up so we can have a discussion and do it sooner than later. There's got to be some sense of urgency for this, however the procedure is, however this process is. We just can't keep kicking the can down the street. Every day that goes by, more homes are being gobbled up with short-term rentals. It's about 24% now. Where does it have to be before we start to discuss it? It's already number two on our priorities. If it's number two, what would happen? God forbid it was not even on the priorities. We would never discuss this. So, as a city council person, Katie has always said, Kate has always said, "Joe, you're doing your job when you listen and come to us with concerns from the residents." I can't make this any clearer. And not, hardly a day goes by, and surely not a week, where residents don't come up to me and tell me they have concerns about short-term rentals. Okay, that's it. So, I can't tell you how much I agree with this gentleman, because I'm confused, too.
Okay, that's fair. And I guess I don't know how else to make it clear that we went through a priority-setting process, and we identified it as a priority. We've put steps in place, and we're going to look at the issues. We can't just, we've got the data. We don't have it. So, we said we want an impact study. We're going to get the information. We'll get the survey. We're going to get both sides in the room. We're going to hear the different issues. We will make a decision. All the information will be shared with the planning commission. It's the process. So, we agreed to go through the process. So.
Mr. Reeser, the issue that I have right now is I don't have the information available to me yet on what the impact of short-term rentals are having in our town. I understand people are upset, they're tired, they don't, neighborhoods want neighbors. But I don't know if we stop all short-term rentals, or 20% of them, 30%. Who, nobody knows that. I want an impact study so I can be fiscally responsible for my constituents so that I'm not voting on something just because somebody complains or wants this or wants that. I need to know what the impact of housing values, what the impact to the city is going to be. I need that impact study to make a valuable vote that the people voted me for to vote on this council. Thank you.
All right, let's zip back to public comment. How's that sound?
Kurt Haller, 103 Michigan Avenue. I agree 100% with Mr. Reeser. Waiting, I mean, I ran boards for years, waiting on studies. We need to have a moratorium while this study stuff is going. This is getting ridiculous of studies, studies, getting information. You guys have had information for years. I mean, in 2016, STRs were an abstract for most people. Now, due to the three Ps of proliferation, proximity, and problems, everybody knows about them. All right? Slow-walking this is not going to make it any better. Moratorium, enforce the zoning. If you read the zoning codes, if you read the, you know, head counts and all this stuff, if that stuff was enforced, a lot of the people that are mad would be happier. We make a lot of rules, we do a lot of talking, but action is limited around here. We need more action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. Steve, what you do have is that surveys have been done, and at least 500 residents have issues with it. I am totally against the decision that was made tonight, the week before, the meeting before, not to allow a moratorium. You do know that it's, STR has caused a lot of bleeding in this community. And I don't understand why this board was set on its hands and not at least try to stop the bleeding that STR has caused, this gaping wound that it's caused. I don't understand that. I don't understand why you all would just sit back and do nothing. So, what saddens me the most is that I don't know how you feel about family, but we sent a son to school to get an engineering degree. We have to allow him to stay in our home while he worked from home because he can't afford a place here in South Haven, can't even find a place to rent. That saddens me. And what hurts me the most, what worries me the most, and I'm not the only parent that has sent a child to school, but what hurts me the most is that one day, the thought of him waking up and saying, "Dad, I'm out of here. There's nothing in South Haven for me. I can't afford a home, a place to stay. I know you've made it comfortable for me to stay here, but I'm gone." And the thought of not seeing my future grandsons grow up, watch them go to school, that saddens me. That is what STR is causing. Maybe it doesn't matter to you, but it hurts me to even think about that. We may be faced with that. Now, just, I'm not into a lot, that's Mary's job. I'm not into a lot of figures, but this bothers me so. Even the high school, Jeff, you know the issue. You know the issue that the South Haven schools are facing. 10 years ago to this day, high schools have dropped law students, 25% drop in student enrollment the past 10 years. The last year, they dropped 5%. Baseline middle school over the last 10 years dropped 17%. Last year was 16% decrease. Now, back, I just want to enter, Steve, you do know we're outlier. Lake Shore municipalities, we have more STRs than any other city. You know that. North Shore Middle School, over the past 10 years, 33% drop in student enrollment. Jeff, you know the hardship. Just here recently, there was two offers given to elementary teachers for a position, both declined because of lack of housing. You're aware of the struggle. Maple Grove Elementary, over the past 10 years, 17% drop. Last year was a 2% drop. Lincoln, over the past 10 years, 36% drop. Last year was a 4% drop, decline in student enrollment. Now, I know there's other factors that cause this, but STR has a big role in it. And as a teacher, you ought to be able to at least be willing to stand up and stop it until we can get a balance. Nobody's saying do away with STR altogether. We want to get a balance, find out what that number is, and in the meantime, not have a survey and all this other stuff, but in the meantime, be willing to put a Band-Aid on it to at least stop the bleeding till we get as many surveys as you want. I hope I don't be faced with my son walking out, as well as a lot of other parents, and not be privileged like you guys to see your kids grow up because they can afford these houses.
Thanks for comments. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Karen Small, 9658 Allen Court. All I can say, all I need to say is I'm a member and good standing and very active at Epiphany Church of the Episcopal. We've been without a priest for, what, two, three years? We had a wonderful young candidate with a young family come, want to be in the church, want to be in this community, couldn't accept a job because he couldn't find a place to live. It's over and over and over again, we are still without a priest. And short-term rentals, we've got mansions going up on the bluff that must be ready to house 10, 15 people. We need this moratorium.
Thanks for comments.
Kate Engelbrecht, 125 Elkenburg Street. Kate, can you explain why Habitat's application was rejected? Do you have any answers?
I don't have their scores, no.
Okay. Now, in hindsight, I think that it's unfortunate that we did not, or that you folks did not require the environmental impact study since Habitat is now having to go back to the drawing board or whatever to resubmit their application. Would it be possible at this point in time to go back to them and tell them that since the application that was submitted April 1st was rejected, now you do have time to do the environmental impact study that the commission voted on? Voted to require rather than let them go ahead with the?
It was a PUD that was accepted and approved by this council at this point. We didn't put any conditions on going backwards if they did not get that study. So, in my mind, the approvals are complete. Would you agree, Nick?
Yes, I agree. That was contingent on approval. It's already been given.
So, the council can't change their mind?
Not without an amendment to the agreement that Habitat would have to agree to.
Perhaps they would be motivated to do that now. At any rate, the environmental impact study was given a waiver. Now, whatever this impact study that is going to be done for the short-term rentals, whatever they find, will that be discounted, just like the need for an environmental impact study? Or, I mean, are we just wasting money? I'm just afraid, you know, you didn't think the environmental impact study was important. Why is this impact study going to be so important?
Two very different things. I mean, and there were a variety of different reasons why the impact study was not voted in favor of. This is, you're comparing apples to oranges, so.
Well, I hope that's true. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. Yes, I certainly understand that you want to understand the impact of, you know, what's going to happen here, but this, STR is the number-two priority of this council for this year. I believe it's the middle of May, which by my calculation leaves about seven and a half months. So, if we would put a moratorium on STRs, just new applications, for six months while we address this issue, I can't believe there's going to be a lot of economic damage done by delaying applications for six months. And if we put that on the agenda, say, for the next council meeting, that would leave seven months in the year, six months to do a survey, an impact statement, and act, because I don't think anything's going to happen much in December, right? I'm just seeing this year slip away, the number-two priority. And what's going to happen in the next seven months? I just see, as has been stated, slow-rolling. I mean, that may not be the intent, and I, you know, I don't fault anyone's intent, but I just don't see this going anywhere. And it's very, very frustrating. Thank you.
And I, just so you're aware, that it's based on our, our goals are set on our fiscal year. So, that's not January, it's July. So, we haven't even started that priority year yet. So, hence, you might be understanding some of the frustration up here when we say, "This is set to be worked on." And we're, I believe, a week away from our, two meetings in June or so. So, anyway, just so we're all on the same page here.
Danielle Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. And to piggyback on Joe Wilkins' personal story, I had lunch today with a 22-year-old young woman who, for the past, I believe, at least five years, worked at Clementine's downtown. Very experienced waitstaff. They relied on her. She no longer works at Clementine's because she could not afford to live in South Haven any longer. Her rent kept going up. So, she's moved out of the city and left her job. So, not only have we lost a worker, we've lost a resident, and we've lost her hope to have a home here. And there was true sorrow in her voice and in her face as she spoke to me and said, "I just can't live here anymore." And she had to move in with a couple of friends, not anywhere near South Haven. So, this story is personal. I know that we're talking in broad strokes. The social fabric of our community is at stake here. And I've only been here three years, but I felt like part of a neighborhood at our council meeting when you went into private session, and we all stuck it out for an hour and a half, waiting for you to come back. And what happened in that time was we formed friendships. We met people we had not met before because we all want the same thing for our community. We want to live and work and play together. We're not saying STRs have to totally go away, but they need to be contained, they need to be monitored, regulations need to be enforced, and we need to put a stop to building more of them until we realize the social impact on our community is vast, it's deep, and there's a lot of sorrow and anger and confusion, as you've heard tonight. So, we are beseeching you to do something.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tim Marinick. I live at 98 Erie. I've been in this community over 30 years and watched the growth. The growth has been good. There was a period when the short-term rentals absolutely were needed. And all that's changed. Too much of a good thing has become a bad thing. And I agree with all the other commentary. You don't want to make them go away. They can't, and we won't. But containment, yes, yes. And now, you know, not six months from now, it's out of hand. So, change it. We need a moratorium.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Dave Tuttle, 116 Clinton. There's been a lot of comments tonight here, and I want to go back to weeks when several members of the board stood up and spoke and said, "This is what we need to do because they've heard from their constituents." And I applaud you for doing that. There's a need for urgency on this topic, and I understand the fiscal year is just starting, and there's some processes that are in place. But there's, as you have heard, there's a high degree of frustration in the community. I have heard that that will manifest itself later this fall if the board doesn't take some action between now and then, that there would be a voter-led initiative to say, "We're done. We're putting a moratorium on this, and the voters will be speaking on the ballot." This is an opportunity for you folks, all of you, the city administration, to stand up and say, "Everybody's concerned about it. We need to understand the financial impact." Rentals are an important part of our community. They've been that way. They've existed. When the resolution was put in place a few years ago, that just started to codify and control it. It was actually a good thing at that point in time. We probably need to do some further things with enforcing behaviors, making sure that the renters and the landlords are good neighbors. the renters and the landlords are good neighbors. How do we enforce that and make that happen? And how do we limit some of the impact in different parts of the city as necessary? So, there's a lot of voices that need to come to table, but it needs to happen quickly. It can't happen in a month, two months, three months. This group should be creating a working committee now, going to the zoning group, whatever needs to happen so that this can, the input can rise. Because if you don't, the citizens will probably rise up and say, "We're done, putting the moratorium in place." And that probably is not the best answer. So, if we have a more thoughtful process with expediency to drive through that, it would be great. I urge you to follow Joe's demand, push for, "Let's have a conversation, and let's have that conversation now." Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Nobody else? All right. Let's go on. City manager comments.
Thank you. So, as we know, we have the May nineteenth, this Thursday, joint housing workshop. It'll be at the Integrated Learning Center at the high, the high school. Myself, Mr. Ross Stein, all of you, everyone here is invited to that workshop. It will be a guided discussion with a presentation, so we'll have Q and A at the end. As I mentioned before, the intent is not to talk about short-term rentals at that workshop. The intent is to talk about what are the housing needs of the community and what kind of products are out there. There have been changes at the state level with a number of the funding initiatives, and we want to learn more about that. Secondly, May fifteenth was this Sunday, and we went to beach flag program. So, if you should be getting your NICS alerts to let you know what are the conditions on the beach and if they upgrade. So, if you are not signed up for those beach alerts, it is, you can text B E A C H E S to eight 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 seven 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 to get those. And then, also, I have Nick Curcio here, and I think it would be prudent to give an update on seventy-seven Clinton. Might be beneficial for some of these folks as well, who may be interested. Nick, can you give us a brief update, what you can say?
Sure. Just, just a quick update. Following the city council's meeting on, I believe, April twenty-fifth, staff, as directed, issued a stop-work order for the construction project at seventy-seven Clinton Street. The property owner has filed suit against the city and requested a temporary injunction, followed by some request for more permanent relief. But the judge, the judge, I believe it was Friday, signed an order implementing a temporary restraining order against the city. So, the, long and short of that is that construction can resume as of tomorrow at the site. There will be a preliminary injunction hearing towards the end of the month where the judge will decide whether or not to extend that, that, I guess, stop longer than that. It's currently in effect for ten days. During that ten-day period, the city's insurance council will get to file a, I guess, a response in the case, and will get to present argument to the judge to determine whether that becomes a preliminary injunction or, or not at that point. So, that's, that's the update as of now. If anyone has any questions, I can answer those. Okay.
Can, Nick, can you go in any more details on why the judge ruled in the favor of the owner?
So, there was no argument or anything from the city's side. With temporary restraining orders, one party just goes into court and makes their arguments in the form of a brief. The other, it happens quickly. It happens basically immediately after the complaint is filed. So, the city didn't get to present any argument, and the judge didn't have a hearing or anything. So, all we know is the content of the order itself. It just goes through the kind of standard factors for, for injunctive relief. It does say that there's a substantial likelihood that the plaintiff may prevail on the merits. That's one of the factors. So, the judge is possibly looking favorably at the landowner's case at this time.
Okay. It will be the same judge?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, when this temporary restraining order is over, will the city, will our attorney, you, or will the insurance attorneys defend our position?
Yes. So, the, the city, MMRMA, the city's insurance provider, has assigned an attorney from the Rosati Schultz Law Firm. He is up to speed on the file. He's been, been working on it the last week or so. He will be submitting a brief to the court before the May twenty-six hearing, asking that the court, you know, let the temporary restraining order expire and not issue a preliminary injunction.
Okay. Anybody else?
If the landowner is successful overall, will they be able to, they'll be able to keep both stories?
That's what they're asking for, yes.
And the balcony as well?
Yes. They're asking for complete relief on all facets of the project, also asking for, for damages. One, one thing about this kind of delay of letting them resume is that it potentially mitigates any damages the city may, may incur because, you know, the project is, it was delayed for three weeks, but is now going to be moving towards construction. That, that could have been a factor in the judge's decision to issue the temporary restraining order.
All right. We're good? Anything else?
Last thing. If you have not noticed, our new signage that's out on the piers, we have that updated and installed. So, those are just temporary barricades and restrictions out there. We're hoping to get approval from the Corps of Engineers to install the fabricated gates that tie in with the blue safety railing. That's all my comments.
And then, any comments on the long trucks downtown?
Long trucks?
Our, our new rules about...
Parking.
Parking?
That's right. So, we are, we have new signage up that says if your trucks are too long, you may be facing a ticket. We're also be working on putting little hash marks at the end of the stalls so we can better see visually where the car is overextending past the stall. So, we are trying to address those concerns that have been brought up. So, we do know that that block from, on Center Street, from Phoenix to Huron is one of the tightest in the city. We will be looking at those as well as those stalls on Phoenix Street.
On Friday, I was down and had a chance to do a little education with a very nice truck owner, two very nice ladies who were parking their truck, which was large, over on Center Street, near Clementine's. And we had a very nice visual because they were striping the road and there were cones. And they came out, we met around the back of their truck, and I said, "You know, we're starting this new policy, and trucks that stick out too far will be ticketed." And she looked, and you could have stretched one arm from the back of her truck to the cone in the middle. She looked, said, "Oh, I guess I'm out there a little ways, aren't I?" Because cars were proceeding to drive all the way around the cones. So, I think there's, you know, I'm sure we'll have a little bit of an education session so that people read those signs, but, or if you see people, maybe tell them. So, there you go. Council comments. I'll start on the left. Ms. Letitia.
First, I want to say prayers for the victims of the shooting in Buffalo, New York. And I was, hold on a second, I wanted to read this. I wanted to read this quote, "When you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, you have to speak up. You must be bold, brave, and courageous, and find a way to get in the way." And I just wanted to commend the citizens of South Haven who come every single meeting to voice your opinions and don't get discouraged. Please continue because it is important, and what you say does matter. We may not be moving as fast as we, that we would like, but believe me, your voices, your voices do count. And I know sometimes the looks might not be so nice, but you are valiant. And I just want to commend you and say thank you. Thank you for coming and with, coming with your comments all the time.
No comment.
My comment, I wanted to, we, item thirteen, we had fifteen or sixteen people willing to volunteer their time to help with, help run the city in various levels. So, just thank you to all those people that we put on those committees and councils tonight. Thank you for doing that. Letitia had a great comment. Thank you always for all you people that come. The, somewhere along the lines, I saw on social media that we're being lobbied, that we're being brainwashed into thinking that short-term rentals have to exist, it's, it's driving our economy, and we'll wither up. No one has approached me like that. No one has said anything to me like that. I do not believe that. I don't believe that we have to have short-term rentals. Matter of fact, I would love to get rid of all the business short-term rentals, but I don't know how to legally do that, and that's what we're trying to learn to do. So, I mean, this seventy-seven Clinton lawsuit, I'll happily take this, I'll take this to court and spend all the taxpayer dollars if you, if you want us to, but I want to stop them legally without all the lawsuits. Because I was on the last time when the Cass Street house and had to spend time in Grand Rapids, and the lawyers fought, and then, you know, that was our tax dollars that went nowhere. That house is still a short-term rental. And so, I want them gone too, but I want to do it the right way. So, we'll do that as fast as we can, I hope.
I just would like to second what Letitia said and then also echo what Joe, or what Jeff said, sorry, and welcome all the new commissioners on board, and thank you all for taking part in this process. And that's all.
I also want to thank everyone that, that came tonight and gave us your input. I do appreciate the emotion involved with the short-term rentals, and everyone is looking at this issue through their, the window of their own neighborhood, and I can appreciate that. The one thing that I'm worried about is, one of the things I love about South Haven is our friendliness as a community and our welcoming of visitors. And I am worried that we're using the term "short-term rentals" very broadly and that we are giving the impression that we don't want people to come to South Haven to visit, that we aren't a welcoming community. And I just want to make sure that we try to find that right balance. And unfortunately, I think what we did, the last time we changed the ordinance is we struck a balance and basically made both sides of that issue unhappy. And so, there's always going to be pressure for the, the people that didn't get what they wanted to eventually try to get their, their... That issue moved toward what they would like to see, and I really want to try to find that right balance. And I'm not sure that the direction we're going right now is going to get us that right balance.
Thank you.
I'd like to start off by saying, Steve, I appreciate the fact that you want facts. Matter of fact, there are times here when I follow your lead because I know you've researched items, you've researched various issues, and I end up voting the way you have because you're well-founded. When it comes to short-term rentals, I really, truly don't believe we need another study. There are so many studies across the country, down, up and down, even our own coast in Michigan. There are so many economic studies about what short-term rentals have done to communities. So, I don't think we need it. But I think Jeff and George, you just proved my whole concern. Jeff, when you say you don't want any business short-term rentals, there's not a person I've talked to yet that is concerned about short-term rentals, that has even come remotely saying they don't want any short-term rentals. They all think we should have some. I believe we should have some. I can take a look at the word one, where I had a house on Erie Street, and I remember when I first moved here, I said, "Boy, this is an old, kind of a dilapidated part of town, but I like it because it's beachy." It's no longer like that. It's fixed up. There are very few homes that really look poorly taken care of, and I attribute that to short-term rentals. They've come in and fixed them up. Then, when George says, "We gotta, we gotta get more information," or "We need to know what the residents want, and we've got both sides unhappy," it proves the point that I was trying to make at the very beginning. All we have to do is talk. There's no right or wrong on this. There's no left and right on this. But I just feel like we've come to a dead stop again because by not voting tonight to at least get it to the planning commission, to at least have discussions about this, we have dropped off, we have cut off any chance at the time, for the time being, to get this thing even moving forward. And the misconceptions, especially in social media, is horrible. That's why I'm not on it. But it's because people aren't talking in public and giving facts and what they think. And one person said tonight about the social fabric, "I would argue that the social issues in this town, how we are living with each other and the quality of our life far exceeds what dollar value we can put on short-term rentals or not on it. We have got, got to look beyond just the economics, even though the economics, I think, will still bear themselves out." So, the last thought I have is, please, let's not do what we did tonight and cut off the conversation. When I said, "Put it down to planning," I just want to have a discussion. I want all of us to talk about it. I think listening to the residents, they're frustrated not because of the decision we made, because we didn't make a decision. We won't even talk about it. And this thing, Mr. Mayor, about process, I'm not even sure what you're talking about, the process. I'm tired of that word. What I want is discussions. So, that's my last word on it. I'm not upset with anyone. I just want to be able to talk about this and how the residents talk, how the people who want short-term resident, or short-term rentals talk. But we have come to an impasse now, and we're not talking at all. And we're going to wait now months for some study, and I think it's unfortunate.
So, I don't forget, if somebody left their glasses last time, they're sitting up here. Those look familiar to anybody? They are not mine. So, somebody left their readers here, FYI. I just want to one, thank everybody for coming. Two, Senior Services Building. If you got there for the dedication last Friday, it was fantastic. It's a great new asset. You stole my thing about NICS, NICS alerts. Nice to see those going again. George, what's the, when are they gonna?
Twenty-three hundred hours on May thirty-first.
May thirty-one. So, the next time we come, there will be no more juice coming out of Palisades. How to say it? Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I guess, two minutes or less. We are going to dig into the STR issue. We have committed to doing that. All of us did unanimously agree to go through that. We've had two different renditions at a rental ordinance. Every time, we've had a ton of public input. We've made changes at different issues at different times. It was noise, it was trash cans, it was size of homes, it was number of occupants. We're hearing some of the issues and concerns. We need to make sure we've got them clearly identified, make sure that we give the planning commission very clear instructions on what we're looking for, and then move forward. There's nobody in this council that said no to working on this issue. So, I'll leave it at that. I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn. Let's, if you say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night.[1788.41]